There is a quorum, so we will call the meeting to order. First item is citizens' comments. Do we have any, Ms. Iwoski?
No.
Thank you. Item number one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners Court on August 6, 2019. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments? If not, entertain a motion.
Not hearing any, Judge, I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gislin, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor? Item passes. Item two, consider and take action to impose a burn ban for -- Grenberg.
Good morning, Court.
Good morning.
The numbers weren't updated as of this morning when I checked it before court, but yesterday, we were at an average of 567, with the lowest reading being 485 and 613 being the highest. Of course, 575 is the threshold that's usually used for a burn ban. We're averaging anywhere from 10 to 12 points increase a day, that we don't have significant rainfall. Every county that touches Henderson County right now, with the exception of Nabeiro County, is above 575. And in the last two weeks, we've had 16 grass fires, and 11 of those have been within the last week. So what we're seeing is, is the hotter it gets, the more it's drying out, we're having more and more grass fires as we progress. Also, I looked on the A&amp;M Forestry Services website, and they're predicting that over the next four to six weeks, we'll have less than 25% of our normal rainfall this year. So it's going to continue to get drier. All of the fuels that we have out there, because of the rains we had earlier, are now starting to dry out to where the fires can spread quickly. So I asked for it to be put on there, because we're really, we're getting to that point where we really need to start considering the possibility of placing a burn ban on.
Okay. Questions?
What's the number up today, you said?
Yesterday, it was at 567.
567.
Before court, I checked, and it did not update yet this morning. But given that we go 10 to 12 points a day, we're probably looking at 577 to 579 as an average.
Exactly.
I mean, from a mapping viewpoint, looking at it on the 11th, as compared with the 12th, there's a portion in Precinct One that has gone from amber to red. And probably, when we get today's numbers, there'll be more spots within the county.
It looked like the Malakoff area had the highest reading right now.
Yeah, that's the way it looks on the map.
But the entire county is, with the exception of just a little bitty spot up north, is over 500. And again, the Keach Byron reading is measuring the moisture in the soil. You really have to pay attention to the fuel load that we have now on top of the ground. We had three grass fires yesterday, for example. I'm sure everybody heard about the one over in Merkson, ended up burning up 10 cars by the time they were able to put it out. Low wind, when the wind is low, and we still have fires spreading quickly, it's becoming an issue.
Chance of rain tomorrow.
Correct.
We're hoping?
Chance of rain, I think, later tonight, tomorrow.
Okay.
I don't know how much rain they're predicting for us to get. I mean, in my opinion, it would take several inches for us to come down on the Keach Byron reading, but I don't think it's going to do anything to the fuel load.
I think it would be worthwhile to repeat what you said about the Keach Vinem Index, because a lot of folks don't really understand that that is based on soil moisture. And we're talking about fuel load on top of that. Because in actuality, the fuel load is helping to keep the soil moist.
Yes, sir.
So these numbers, in this particular year, when we've had nearly 70 inches of rain, which is over the last nine months, if you look at it from the 1st of September through the end of June, nearly 70 inches of rain that we had with a normal rainfall in Henderson County of 41 inches over a 12-month period. So this here is just because we haven't had any rain in the last three weeks to speak of. And the temperature is hitting 90 every day.
Correct.
So even if we have rain, it's not going to change this fuel load. It's just going to dampen it for a few days, and if it goes right back up to 90 degrees, that will all evaporate.
That's true. My concern right now is, is that it's not just the grasses and things like that that are dying off or burning quickly. Now it's starting to affect the canopies.
Yep.
So your, you know, lower lying brush and trees that, you know, the cedar trees and things like that, that sometimes a grass fire won't catch, but once they get to the point to where they start to dry out, now we have a bigger issue.
What the fire departments, where they stand on, do they?
The ones that I've talked to, you know, they're on the fence about it. Of course, you've got to understand, burn ban does put a burden on the fire departments, because they have to go out to every single fire.
Exactly.
At that point. So they're on the fence about it. Usually, the ones that say, yes, they want a burn ban, tell me, yes, they want a burn ban. The ones that say no, say no.
Did you talk to all of them?
I did not.
Any other questions? Thoughts?
I think it's important that we have it on there to let people think, you know, realize that it's becoming a possibility. A condition to become right for the fire season.
Well, that was one of the things that agreed to, was by putting it on here, at least, we're beginning to get the discussion started. We haven't met that threshold, but as you said, the fuel load is heavy and the canopy is dry. And we're within striking distance of that. Now, one of our standing jokes is, if we put a fire ban on, be sure and make it rain. So if you want to shower.
That was my, going to be my comment, because the last six months, I put one on, it rained.
So do we wish to let this stand as just a discussion, or do we wish to take action?
I'd like to see us watch it. And like you said, to get the word out this week, it is a concern to our county, and it is getting to that point, no doubt. But I'd like to see what another week would bring, personally.
Okay. Okay. Hearing that, we'll move on to the next one, and we will put this on the agenda for next week as well.
For next week, since we are taking no action, would you ensure that you try to speak with all of the fire departments before you come back on Tuesday? So we have sort of a poll vote from them.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Item number three, consider and take action on Henderson County Employee Health and Dental Benefits Renewal Package for or from November the 1st, 2019, to October 31st, 2020 Year Plan. Mr. Vinem.
Yes, Court. First off, I just want to start off, and I'm not going to do this generally in the public, but I just want to say that this year, our health insurance benefits and dental and things like that, there was a huge increase. And as you gentlemen that sit on the Court, y'all know how much this actually affects our budget for several other people that are sitting in this room that have that as well. So it's very important. So this year, I just, I want to say that our health insurance committee, our insurance committee group, did their lot of work into what decisions we've actually come to and are recommending to you and the board. And I definitely appreciate everybody's time. I just want to point out, Anne Marie is our chairman of our committee. We also have two commissioners that sit on that committee, Commissioner Gislin and Commissioner McCam as well, our county attorney, also our HR director sit on that, and then, of course, myself. I will say also that Nikki Harris this year had a big part in this as well. So I just want to say thank you to everybody and all your time. We put in a lot of time. This year, we had a 7.5% increase to our health insurance, which did affect our budget a lot. So we put a lot of work into trying to make some changes and do some things a little different, to try to make it come down a little bit to benefit everybody, Henderson County and our employees and what we do. So just again, I want to say thank you to everybody. So I guess to start off with, in your packet, what I entered was submitted in the packet, was the original renewal package that we actually got. So we want to kind of overlook that, just simply because we have made some changes. And if you look to the back page of that, the spreadsheets that we actually entered into that, was the spreadsheets that we come up with some different plans that we actually had, the pack actually give us some information back on, different figures. And again, also, let's say, anybody on the committee who want to comment or speak on any of this, please do so. As you all know, we've had a lot of numbers go through our heads here. So on the health insurance, I just want to say that I think the committee's recommendation on the PPO plan was going to be the option 2A, which, does everybody have a copy of that?
Excuse me.
There was some changes that we actually looked at that. The record deductible is the same as 1,500. The emergency service deductible went from 150 to 400. And we looked at that in a way that we're trying to get people to kind of stay away from there, because that's a huge cost to the plan, and maybe look at using more of our urgent care, because we do have several of those here within the percentage figure that people can use. And that urgent care plan went up from 30, 40, to 60. We didn't want to raise it real high, but we did do that, and it did affect our plan. So those are some of the changes that we are looking at, that we did. We did a $250 deductible on our specialty drug. And then there's another $100 deductible on our RX. That brings that plan cost to 936 for employee only, 936.54. Currently, we're at 919, 14. But with our renewal package, it was actually going to go to 988, to we had to make some changes here. I like, if y'all, Mr. Gislin, if you'd like to comment or anything.
Well, I mean, just to emphasize what you said earlier, the 919 to 998 was a 7.5% increase. And where we ended up, going from 919 to 936, is a 1.8% increase. So it was a pretty significant negotiation we had with the Texas Association of County Insurance Pool Representatives, as well as a consultant we brought up board to assist us.
If there's no questions on the PPO, I'll move on to the HSA. So, Anne Marie, anything? So our HSA plan, it did change a little bit. We are currently at a plan where there's a $2,700 deductible. We're going to move that to 4,000. We realize that's a little high, but felt like that that was a need there, to get that plan down to where we need it. Again, that renewal for the HSA was a 7.5%. We actually, if we go into the 4,000, we're going to go to a negative 2.1%. That's huge. So we currently have 29 employees on that plan. To be very honest with you, I think that this year, a little education in that plan, that's going to probably increase, that really will increase, I expect that to. So that's really all I have for y'all with that, on the health. I'll answer any questions if I can. If I can, I'm sure there's someone on our committee that can, if that, if I could get a little here. Any questions on the PPO or the HSA? Currently, also, these two plans are approved. We'll have to go back to TAC to issue us a plan, or possibly be able to sign off on it, because we don't currently have that just in our hands, which is what we're going to do today.
Questions?
I think I gave y'all plan approval date. Plan approval date is actually September the 20th, but we want to move forward with this as quick as we can, simply because of our HSA plan, PPO plan, we would like to be able to do some training for the employees, to give them true factors on how things work. And to be able to do that, we need to get our renewal package done, so that we can actually have that stuff before we do our enrollment, which is September the 19th, start somewhere in there.
Okay.
So that's the reason for our rush with this right now. Like I said, rolling them, did happen, but also, we need to get this down for our budget as well.
Questions, comments?
I think the education, like Michael said, is important right here, to let the employees know, before open enrollment and during open enrollment, what these plans do offer. And there's some things in the plans that, like MD Live, there's a, they offer this, and I got on it immediately, and it's already benefited myself from it. I didn't even know that we had that option. But there's some things that I think we educate our employees at open enrollment, and like I said, right before open enrollment, we'll kind of have a better idea of what these plans do offer, and I think they're the two wise choices by the committee.
We, as a committee, we felt like the educational side is really going to be important to employees. We just need to get everybody there to be able to participate. And as far as I know, our resource director, Haley Beaver, is in the process of making those arrangements as of today. And so we've already got some things in place that's going to actually happen when these plans are actually approved. So I, again, think that would be very wise.
Commissioner?
I thank the committee for all the hard work, because I know it's been a long, trying time, and looking at ways to save the money that we need to save. So thank y'all.
Well, I'd like to echo those same comments, the work that the committee did. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, ladies. Insurance is the continual, insurance costs for the continual plague as far as increases. We have continued to fight these. The educational portion of it, I agree, is crucial, that we can get up our education process for our employees, so they know what's available. It, myself, I was not even, I did not understand what all was available until we started this process. So thank y'all for bringing that out to the forefront. Any comments from the two members that are on the committee?
I'd like to let everybody know that we spent a lot of time, after the initial shell shock of seeing what the insurance was going to cost us this year, trying to devise a plan that would be good for our employees and be something the county could afford. And I know, you know, everybody's not going to be pleased with what we did, but I think it was the best plan that we could come up with our employees, for our employees, and that the county could afford.
Commissioner?
I agree with everything Commissioner McCam just said. I just hope that the employees hear that the rate increase was 7.5%. 7.5%. Those that follow the economy know that those on social security, their cost of living increase is through about 3%. Think about that. 3% increase, cost of living, insurance goes up 7.5%. That complete burden could not have been put on the employees, because they couldn't afford it. And we could not afford to give all employees a 7.5% increase, because the public wouldn't understand why we were doing that. So we had to go to the negotiating table with TAC to come up with a better plan, to drive the cost down. And, Michael, you stated, training will help us next year to better educate our employees. But to echo Anne Marie Lee's comment that she does, makes on a pretty regular basis, we have to drive our employees to realize, taking care of themselves is their responsibility. And increases in the rate is based on usage of the plan. So the healthier we are, we look forward to next year with a lower renewal rate. Because the sad thing about health insurance, it is just like all other insurance. If there is a hurricane that hits Houston, you can rest assured that your property insurance is going to go up. If there is a huge hailstorm in Dallas and wipes out 10,000 roofs, you can rest assured State Farm is going to raise the insurance rates. If your county has a lot of sick people, you can rest assured that the rates are going to go up. So not only is this training that Ms. Haley is going, Haley Beaver is going to be rolling out with the consultant in September, is addressing the proper use of the plan, but it's also educating the folks that their responsibility is to eat better, exercise more, and live a healthier life. Because that is the bottom line of how we can control our healthcare costs here in Henderson County. Did I do good on that there, Anne Marie?
That was a good comment, and you are correct there, Commissioner. Before we move on to the dental plan, I'd like for Nikki Harris, who works in the office and also handles the billing and stuff, for our health insurance plans, if we can, I'd like for her to talk a little bit about the, how we enter monies into the HSA right now through currently through WageWorks, if that we'll be able to have, if we can do that at this time.
It's a part of it, yes. Go right ahead.
Good morning. And right now, we have WageWorks that does our HSA/FSA, and we are wanting to switch to go just strictly to HSA Bank. So I just have a, not, it's not really contractors, it's employers, to sign up for us to get the process started, so that we have it for open enrollment. And then with this, for HSA, there is no cost to switching everybody over to the HSA Bank, but for FSA, there is a $500 setup fee, a one-time fee.
Questions?
Who's that fee to?
It's to HSA Bank.
From HSA Bank, is that what you're calling it?
HSA Bank.
So instead of going through WageWorks, you'll be going directly to the bank?
Correct.
FSA?
Correct.
HSA Bank.
And right now, with WageWorks, it's a $2.50 cost to the employee on their paychecks.
Every paycheck.
Every paycheck. And then going through HSA Bank, it will come out of their HSA account, so that's going to drop that deduction off of, you know, me having to take it out of their checks and sending a check in till a monthly.
It's still the same amount, though?
It dropped it to $1.50 a month.
All right, so it's cutting that in half.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Any other questions? So recap, we are, what's before us for the PPO plan is Plan 2A. The HSA plan is number two, and the utilization of the HSA Bank. Those are the items here.
And the, if you look closely on, I think the HSA is Plan 600. We refer to it as Option 2, but it is HSA 600.
I'll also need, I guess, the judge's signature to, for us to write a letter for him to sign, canceling our contract with WageWorks, which is a 30-day, and then also to sign the HSA employer sign-up.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Nikki. So moving forward, the next thing on the health insurance, dental insurance, and so forth on this plan, is our dental insurance. We did have an increase of 4% on the dental. I'm under the impression that we won't continue with the same plan that we actually have right now with our dental. That's also with, with the.
No changes in those plans?
No, sir.
There was no changes whatsoever in the dental plan. One of the reasons was that, going back several years, Judge, when we were primarily under MetLife, the usage was pretty low on dental. Once we've switched over to Blue Cross Blue Shields Dental with TAC, it's very obvious that our employees are using the dental plan. I think everyone pretty well knows that good health is lots of times associated direct, or it's directly proportional with good dental. So that's one of the reasons the committee decided not to mess with this particular plan. We may have to a year from now, but not this year.
You know, the questions, comments referring to dental? What about our voluntary vision plan?
So next, we have the volunteer vision plan. The rate did not change at all on the volunteer vision, and that is strictly a volunteer, the employee chooses to sign up for that. They can do so, and of course, that is deducted from their paycheck. So there was no changes with that as well.
Okay. Any other questions or comments concerning what we've discussed? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the TAC PPO Plan 2A, the HSA 600 Plan, and utilize HSA Bank with judge's authorization to sign all necessary documents.
Dental plan?
Pardon?
Dental plan?
Dental plan is tied into the actual other two plans, correct?
That's correct. Got it. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Gislin, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve PPO Plan 2A, HSA 600 Plan, and utilize HSA Bank with the judge's authorization to sign all necessary documents. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you, Court, for everybody's time. Also, I'll shoot this out to take the TAC, get our phone back, and get this signed.
Thank you, sir. And for, in court, we will, in the documents, some updating with the, with the creation of our HR department, is being added into the contacts, and having our consultants' information added in. We'll be sure all of that is taking place as well. Item number four, consider and take action to appoint board members to the Henderson County Levy Improvement District Number Three. Gentlemen, you'll remember, a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Martin Bennett came before us, and he had had discussions with the board members of the Levy District. And the thought process was brought forward of, since there is no actual term limits set statutorily on this board, to keep it fresh and to keep individuals that want to be on there, they asked that we take applications for the board. And we did, and we had three responses, and they are in your back, in your backup. in your backup. And they are Mr. Jody Watson, Mike Rochelle, and William Graham. Mr. Martin was going to be here today... Mr. Bennett was going to be here today, but I don't see him in the audience. Be happy to answer any questions that I can. Commissioner Thomas, it is in your precinct?
Yeah, I'd like to add that these are the three that did put in, the only three that I received. And of course, Jody's been on the board for short-term, done a great job. Mike Rachel also was appointed on the board and another good person on the board, really. It's the right choices, for sure. And William Graham is new, and he's got a lot of property down there, shows a lot of interest, very well-qualified gentleman to be on the board. And I, in my estimation, it's a good... it's a good solid board for the levy, and I would recommend these three be appointed to the board. And probably every three or four years, probably needs to be looked at to get... if there's any stay on this or someone else is interested, I think it's a good idea. And I applaud us looking at this again.
Questions or comments?
Comment? Mary Margaret, for the record, the court appointed Jody Watson, who currently serves as the president to Levy District Number 3 on February the 2nd, 2016. Michael Rochelle was appointed by the court on August the 14th, 2018. He functions as the treasurer. Therefore, with the action that I think we're about to do, we will have a new person that will be appointed today. Therefore, the minutes will show the actual appointment date without having to do hours of research to find it.
I had discussions... one other thing that I wanted to bring up that Mr. Bennett had discussed is the board in recent years has become very active in the maintenance of the levy. It's always been our responsibility, but they're taking quite a few large steps in recent years on repairs and so forth to it.
Well, there's been a lot of damage to that levy, and they've had, you know, a tough go. It's been a hard process for all of them, but it's taken a lot of work from these two gentlemen that have been on the board to get that moving and get some of those breaches in the levy fixed. Now, they've still got some more to go. They're not caught up, but with the rains that we've had and the floods in '15 and '16 and of course this year, they've had a difficult time, but they are doing a good job getting it back to where it needs to be. So I applaud them for the work they've done.
How many miles of levy is in Levy District Number 3?
Jody?
Twenty-seven.
And your annual abollorum taxes for Levy District Number 3 is about 34,000. That's a lot of... that's not very much money to maintain that many miles of levy.
And again, when I speak of them becoming active, they've received quite a few donations from landowners to assist in bringing this together, and we commend them very much so for this.
Was there any more damage during the last nine months?
No, sir. Just erosion of the breaches that were in place.
How many breaches do we have, Jody?
We had five.
Had five at the most?
We're down to two.
Down to two. Very good.
We should have four of them fixed. Rochelle, have the face, please.
Right. Good.
If you would, Jody, I would appreciate... you may be doing it now. I just... I'm just kind of unclear. You publish an agenda. I would like to see that on Henderson County's website. The irony is, I could... I've reviewed all of your agendas over the last several years, but it wasn't on the Henderson County website. It's on the Navara County website. And I find it interesting. I could find out what you're doing looking at Navara, but I can't find it here. So I don't know if you're sending it into the clerk of courts or to the judge's office, or it's just being posted at Malakoff on the building that you meet, and it doesn't come here, but it certainly would be good. I'm just trying to get you some more visibility of the board and the activity, and having that on the website would help.
Bringing up a good point. The Levy District actually is in two counties.
That's correct. Three.
Excuse me, three counties.
Three counties.
That is correct.
And that's why it's always posted on the Navara County.
Right.
And I just don't know why it's not posted here. That's where they started back in the day, and that Levy Board has been going for, I don't know exactly, the year it started. Jody didn't kind of know. Anyway, it's been going for a while. My father-in-law sat on that board for years back in the '60s, so it's been...
Well, if there's no further discussion, entertain a motion to appoint... get up here to the list. Mr. Jody Watson, Mr. Mike Rachel, and Mr. William Graham to the Board of Henderson County Levy Improvement District Number 3.
Judge, I'd like to make that motion and thank these guys for stepping up and sitting on this board, but I'll make the motion to... for Jody Watson, Mike Rachel, and William Graham to sit on the board for the Levy District Number 3 located in Precinct 1.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Tulley, to appoint Jody Watson, Michael Rachel, and William Graham to the Board of Directors for Henderson County Levy Improvement District Number 3. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Item five, receive financial reports. Gentlemen, we have financial reports of all five JP's in the backup. And for the public, these will be available for viewing after court in the county clerk's office. Item six, consider and take action on payroll distributions, accounts cat... and accounts cash sheet.
I do have payroll totals for bi-weekly 16.
Entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the payroll distributions for bi-weekly Number 16. All those in favor? Item passes.
And I have no account sheet.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item seven, consider and take action on submitted contracts? None. Item eight, consider and take action on requests for right-of-way permits? Item nine, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments? Item 11, consider and take action on submitted plats? Commissioner Thomas?
You skipped the bills, didn't you?
Oh, excuse me, I did skip the bills, but we'll continue on since Tyler's up.
No bills?
Thank you.
No bills?
I don't have any bills.
No bills, not yet.
I'd like to have some bills, thank you. I'm hoping to have some in the future. We have one plat in Precinct 1 with Commissioner Thomas and...
and good morning, Judge and Commissioner. This is just 11 lots. The developer's name is Bart Galley. I worked with him before, pretty good developer, actually. Quite a bit of back and forth and comments, and we met out there and drove around a couple of times. And it was much larger as you see on the plat. It's only 12 lots, and there's a big gaping area in the middle. He's going to have 10-acre lots in the middle, which are unregulated by the county. So...
Excuse me, sorry.
So that was in response... we wanted him to say there was no more than one family dwelling on each lot, and... which he didn't really want to do. So he took off the larger lots, which was fine. We can't regulate those anyway, so... Anyway, I'll let you look it over. This is generally... it's across from the cemetery there at 2329 and 3054, kind of in the log cabin area.
It's off Hidden Acre Road.
Yeah. Right across the road.
Yeah.
Just barely in your precinct.
Yes, this is right at the border of Precinct 1 and Precinct 2, County Road 1429, off of the FM Road there, close to the Eustace Cemetery. Good.
Yes. Meets all our specifications on our subdivision regulations?
Yes, sir. It's the best one. Where's his electric? Is he going to be out on the road? Yeah, there's power there already.
Yeah, there's power there, and he signed off on it. Dustin Talent on your left, which is added to the subdivision plat, I think is the right...
Yes, sir.
Dustin works for Trinity Valley Electric.
And not that it's relative, but they also gave some area for a new well for Paint Springs, which was desperately needed.
This is the location up on the northeast? Is that what you're speaking of?
Actually, about almost 20 years ago, they tried a well there and dry-holed it. So that was... they owned it and sold it just within the last couple of years. The new well is kind of over in the Lot 9 and Lot 8 area. It's over there, there in the corner. That was kind of some high ground over there.
And all the fees, Judge, and certificates paid for, we've got those through Mary Margaret, County Clerk?
All the necessary signatures, 911?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Questions for the commissioner or the commissioner? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Okay, Judge, I'll make a motion that we accept the plat subdivision for Oak Water Edition Final Plat located in Precinct 1. For the... yeah, for filing purposes only.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Tulley, to approve for filing purposes only the Oakwood Water Edition Final Plat. All those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good day.
Thank you, Tyler.
We'll move back to item 10. My apologies, consider and take action on payment of bills.
Yes, Court, this morning, I need approval on bills in the amount of $250,873.76.
Questions, Commissioner Thomas?
No questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tulley?
No questions.
Commissioner McCam?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Gisland?
Congratulations, Sheriff. You hit a, I think, the lowest amount of water consumption we've had all year. It's not below $10,000, though. It's not even below $15,000, but it's better than what it's been running. Guess that Saint Augustine got thirsty over the last 30 days, couldn't it, Judge?
Worded up.
Ann Marie, have we always contracted court reporter services for the AG Court?
I'm not sure.
I just noticed we had one this time, and I hadn't noticed it, and maybe I just never picked it up, or it's coded a little bit differently. I thought, you know, we had enough court reporters that they could have covered that kind of like...
Well, that's a separate entity, so I don't know.
I don't know.
Our volunteer for a separate organization.
Well, I'm just asking.
We pay that AG reporter every... whenever I need.
So it is routine that they bring their own court reporter?
It's the same one.
It is.
Even every two weeks or whatever.
All right. I have no other questions or comments.
Is this the only set of bills we have?
Mm-hmm. There was a change in the amount added to state sales tax.
Okay. I do not believe I have the current set. What is the number that you have? Any further comments? Move to pay the bills in the amount of... entertain a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $250,873.76.
So moved, Judge. Approve bill.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Tulley, to approve the bills as presented. All those in favor? Item 12, open and consider bids? No bids.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Tulley, to adjourn. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you very much for joining us today.